Tonight, we're just about to start the meeting. Before we do, I'll invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then I'll bring the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day you've given us. Thank you for the joy that you give us to serve our residents. God, I pray for each council member, for each staff member, for anyone in the public who's here tonight, and those watching at home. God, I just pray that you give us all understanding, give the council good discernment on how to proceed tonight on all these issues. God, we just pray that above all else, we glorify you and we honor you, and God, that we do the best for our residents. We ask all these things and trust you for them now in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, May 14th, 2024, and we'll start off by asking the city clerk, call a roll. Denise?
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Taldo. Jeff Watson. Mike Overton. Mike Lawson. Rex Bailey. Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fugierus. Ernest Cade.
Here.
You heard Mark. Mark is joining us on the phone. Item four, comments from our residents. If we have residents that would like to address the council, this is the time they set aside at each regular meeting. Council will hear brief comments from our citizens, and we ask that you keep your comments brief. Please come to the microphone, clearly state your name and address, and again, keep your comments brief, and the council will take no action on what you bring forward tonight. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? All right, thank you. We'll move on then to item five, approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look these over. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Procedural motions, what's your pleasure, council?
I'm going for A and B.
A and B.
Second.
And a second. Okay, roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Carrier 7-0.
Great, thank you. I've got a presentation to make. Is David here? David?
Hi, David. How are you?
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I'll read this proclamation, and you're welcome to say anything you'd like. Okay? This is a proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas amitrophic lateral sclerosis, ALS, known by many as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a progressive fatal neurodegenerative disease in which a person's brain loses connection with muscles, slowly taking away their ability to walk, talk, eat, and eventually breathe. And whereas every 90 minutes, someone is diagnosed with ALS and someone passes away with from ALS, on average, patients diagnosed with ALS only survive two to five years from the first diagnosis. ALS has no cure. And whereas people who have served in the military are more likely to develop ALS and die from the disease than those with no history of military service. Whereas securing access to new therapies, durable medical equipment, and communication technologies is of vital importance to people living with ALS. Clinical trials play a pivotal role in evaluating new treatments, enhancing quality of life, and fostering assistive technologies for those living with ALS. And whereas we celebrate the 10th anniversary of the Ice Bucket Challenge through renewed commitment to galvanize public awareness and support funding, leading to significant investments in ALS research. And whereas the ALS Association, as the largest philanthropic funder of ALS research globally, has committed over $154 million to support more than 550 projects across the United States and 18 other countries. Our commitment to accelerating the pace of discovery remains unwavering, fueled by hope that one day ALS will be livable disease for everyone, everywhere, until we can cure it. And whereas ALS Awareness Month increases the public's awareness of people with ALS as dire circumstances, and acknowledges the terrible impact the disease has not only on the person, but on his or her family and the community, and recognizes the research being done to eradicate this disease. Now therefore, I Doug Sprouse, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as ALS Awareness Month, and I call upon the citizens of Springdale to join in supporting ALS research, advocating for increased funding, and standing in solidarity with those affected by this relentless disease. David?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so my name's David Brunton. You can probably tell, and maybe not from around these parts. There's probably a clue in the way I'm saying some words for you. So I came across ALS unfortunately because my wife was diagnosed 2021, and I had no idea what the disease was before we lived with it for a couple of years. But on behalf of the ALS Association, I'm here today with gratitude and admiration. We're so grateful to Mayor Sprouse and the esteemed members of the city council for their unwavering commitment for recognizing ALS Awareness Month. In declaring May as ALS Awareness Month, you're helping to significantly raise awareness of the challenges faced every day by families impacted by ALS, and it emphasizes the importance of the support of research and advocacy in the fight against this relentless illness. As the caregiver for my late wife, who passed away from ALS in February 2023, I know how important it is that we all join together to fight this horrible terminal disease. I had no intention of being involved in anything to do with ALS after my wife passed, but here I am now as the chair of the Leadership Council for the ALS Association in Arkansas, because we want to try and teach and educate other people that maybe to make their lives a little bit easier. So by officially recognizing ALS Awareness Month, the mayor and the city council have not only demonstrated compassion, but show ALS sufferers and the families that they're not alone in their fight. In closing again, on behalf of all ALS patients, the caregivers and families, I extend my deepest gratitude to Mayor Sprouse and the members of the city council for their compassionate leadership and dedication to making a positive difference in the lives of all of us affected by ALS. Together, let's keep raising awareness and working towards a world where ALS is no longer classed as a terminal disease. We don't have a cure for ALS yet, but we do have hope. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, David. Thank you, and for your work. Thank you. All right. Council, we are at item eight. I'll read it, a resolution approving a conditional use, C24-05, for Iglesia Palabra Viva at 2250 West Sunset Avenue, Suite 4. And I'll turn it over to Ernest.
Thank you, council. If you recall, there was a, at the last council meeting, there was a, an appeal that you heard on a denial of the planning commission's vote for a conditional use at this location. And by a vote of five to four, the council overturned the planning commission's decision, and we were instructed to bring this resolution back with the conditions for the conditional use. I'll go ahead and read the title. A resolution approving a conditional use for Iglesia Palabra Viva at 2250 West Sunset Avenue, Suite 4, Use Unit 42 and a General Commercial, C2 District, is set forth in ordinance number 4030. And the conditions are listed there in the resolution. If you want me to read them in the record, I can, but they are in the, they are included in the resolution.
Move a resolution to be adopted. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions in the council? Or anyone in the audience need to speak to this? Okay. Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Here we go. Here we go. The resolution is before you, and it looks like we're ready for you to cast your votes. Mark, how would you vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Here we are again.
Well, I would be hypocritical if I didn't vote for it after I voted to get it here. So that was one of the ones I, and I'm willing to give them a chance. So, so yes, we'll, I'll vote yes.
Carrier's 5-3.
All right. Item nine, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations by Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy's not here. Here's Sharon. Thank you, Sharon, for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Sprouse, council members. I'm Sharon Tromberg, Assistant Planning Director, stepping in for Patsy. Today's her birthday, so it's a well-deserved day off.
Okay.
And the first item is a replat of RL Hayes First Edition, Block 10, at Velma Avenue and Dodson Street. The planning commission reviewed this and recommends for approval. The title reads, "In Ordinance Accepting the Replat of Lots 12A and 16A, Block 10, RL Hayes First Edition to the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and Declaring an Emergency."
Any questions? What's your pleasure, council?
Move the ordinance to be adopted.
Was there any opposition at the planning commission?
Little discussion, unanimous vote for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments in the council? Does anybody in the audience want to speak to this? Okay, Denise? Oh, I'm sorry. Here we go. Well, it doesn't have, it's hard to break. Okay, council, you can cast your votes now. Mark, how will you vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, all votes are logged?
Carrier 7-0 has an emergency clause?
Move emergency clause to be adopted. Second.
Okay, when you guys are ready, we'll vote on the emergency clause. There we go. Now you can cast your votes. Mark, how do you vote on the emergency clause?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Carrier 7-0.
All right, Sharon?
All right. The second item is a final plat of the Charlotte Edition, a commercial subdivision at South 48th Street and West Don Tyson Parkway. The planning commission reviewed this and recommends for approval. The title reads, "In Ordinance Accepting the Final Plat of Charlotte Edition Subdivision in the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and Declaring an Emergency."
Move the ordinance to be adopted. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay. Ready for council to vote. There you go. Mark, how do you vote on this? Okay, thank you, sir.
Carrier 7-0.
Move emergency clause to be adopted.
Let's bring up the emergency clause. There you go. What's your vote on the emergency clause, Mark? Thank you.
Carrier 7-0.
Thank you all.
All right, thanks, Sharon. Item 10, Parks and Recreation Committee Chair is Mike Lawson. Mike?
Thank you, mayor. We had three items before, it's three resolutions that are all pertaining to the same thing. Koby will be here to answer any questions, but it's basically a, taking the fire station over off Sanders and renovating it and doing some upgrades to the building and fence and some, just some work to get it where they can use it. I'll go ahead and read the first resolution. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract for installation of new fencing at the trail maintenance facility and to appropriate funds. And like I said, Koby's here if you've got questions.
Move a resolution to be adopted. Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay, we're ready to vote. Thank you, sir.
Carrier 7-0.
All right, the second resolution, like I said, pertains to the same thing. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract of installation of new roof and gutters at the trail maintenance facility and to appropriate funds.
Just as a reminder, this is for the roofing. We know that at a minimum, we'll get $27,000 back from the municipal insurance program. Most likely, we'll get all of it back, so that's why this is separated out.
The resolution pass. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? All right, we're ready to bring up the vote screen. Okay. Mark, how do you vote on this? Thank you, sir.
Carrier 7-0.
And the last resolution reads, "A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract for exterior renovation work and to appropriate funds."
Move the resolution to be adopted. Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions?
That is the old fire station. This is the one behind Sanders. This resolution also includes the one behind Schlotzky's off of 412.
Yeah, the old stations, two and three.
Yeah.
All right. I think we're ready to put up the, this screen. Thank you. Mark, how do you vote on this? Okay, thank you.
Carrier 7-0.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Amelia Taldo could not be here tonight, and she took the finance committee, she's head of the finance committee, and took that during committee meeting. Who would like to take that?
I can take it.
Jeff would.
Jeff? Okay.
All right. Finance committee, looks like there was five items from the finance committee. First item, 11A, has to do with competitive bidding for the purchase of a greenhouse. And mayor, I had mentioned this one to you. I'll go ahead and bring this up again.
Yeah.
I feel like there was, maybe the discussion was a little rushed on this at the committee meeting. I didn't feel like we had discussed it enough and to have a good understanding of what our total expenses are going to be on this greenhouse. And so I would feel more comfortable if we had more discussion, and I'd like to send this resolution back to the committee for further discussion. So I'd make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to refer this back to committee. Want to thank Caleb and Poppy for being here tonight. Looks like, I think, if the council votes to send this back to committee, and we'll try and get some direction, we want to be sure and get them everything they need before then. So there, I know, I know a couple of questions they had, and I can get with you on those. But we'll work with James and, and get that, try and get as much information as we can. There are some, there are going to be, still be some unknowns. That's fair to say, because, but, but if we're going to start this up in the fall, then we need to be getting the greenhouse ordered, which is all this is. But I certainly understand the need. We want all the questions answered we possibly can. So let's, we'll try and get all the information for them by next committee meeting. Okay? All right, so do we need to, you guys on the screens, can y'all put that together? Motion to table, or, or do we need to just do a voice vote? I mean, a roll call? If y'all can get, there you go. There you go. Thank you, guys. Y'all are, y'all are pretty fast. Appreciate it. Okay, council, you can vote? No, I'm sorry. That, that's not what that says.
This is, this is not what we're.
No, that's not it, guys. What, we, Councilman Watson has made a motion, and it's been seconded, that we table, I guess table's the right word, until the next, until the next committee meeting, or refer it back to committee for more discussion.
Do we do that by vote, voice? Do you know how to do that?
Let's do this one by that, because we kind of, on the, this, this will be a vote to refer it back to committee on the 20th. Okay. Okay, that sounds good. Go ahead, Denise.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson? Bailey? Harriman? Fugierus?
Carrier 7-0.
Okay. Thanks again, guys. We'll get, we'll get more stuff together and, and be ready to discuss it further at committee next week. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. 11D, this resolution has to do with the section of the commission lawsuit. And this resolution is forward to council with recommendation for approval. You pushed your button? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Pushed the wrong button. I'm not going to go over. Title to this resolution at 11B is "A Resolution Authorizing the City Attorney to Settle a Condemnation Lawsuit Related to Property at 6036 Daring Road, Project Number 23B PS2, Tract 15." The finance committee did forward that resolution to council with recommendation for approval.
Move resolution pass. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? All right, it should be coming up on your screen. There you go. Mark, how will you vote on this? Thank you, sir.
Carrier 7-0.
Item number 11C has to do with appropriating funds for the Springdale Pride Trail Alignment. And again, this resolution was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval, as I recall.
Yes.
Title to that resolution is "A Resolution Authorizing the City of Springdale to Enter Into a Contract and Appropriate Funds for the Springdale Pride Trail Alignment Study."
Okay, looks like, I think it's up there ready for you. Have a motion. Thank you. You guys are good. Entertain a motion.
Move the resolution to be adopted.
Okay.
Could you talk about the funding on this one more time?
Sure. So this is a carbon reduction program grant funded. It's a reimbursement program, so we'll be reimbursed for 80% of the cost. The grant is up to $125,000. The contract is for $122,649.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second, and are there any, anybody in the audience need to speak to this? Okay? You can vote, council. Mark, how do you vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Carrier 7-0.
Tristan did a good job on the news last night, by the way.
Yes, I thought that, I thought so, too. I'm on there tonight, if you want to watch. By, I'll just say, the great opening, or not an opening, not near an opening, but a great announcement on Spring Street and the old Spring Street Grill for Greg Taylor's and others' project is going to be really cool. So, anyway, that's why I said that. Is that okay, Greg?
After that advertisement, we'll move to 11D.
Advertising for Springdale. There you go.
Item 11D has to do with the city's contract with the Downtown Springdale Alliance. This resolution to renew the contract was forwarded to council from the committee with recommendation for approval. The title to that resolution is "A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Renew a Contract with Downtown Springdale Alliance to Promote, Preserve, and Enhance Downtown Springdale, and to Facilitate the Implementation of the Downtown Master Plan."
Just one correction. It was forwarded without a recommend, this was, this is the one that was forwarded without a recommendation, because Jill wasn't able to be here, so.
I'm here tonight. Any questions that I can answer for you all?
Thanks for everything that's going on. We're, it's just fantastic downtown Springdale.
Well, I'm, I feel very blessed to be a part of all of it, and excited for what all is ahead for us.
Move resolution pass. Second.
Okay, great. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comment or questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay, I think we're ready to vote, guys. Thank you. Mark, how do you vote on this? Thank you, sir.
Carrier 7-0.
Thank you, council and mayor. Appreciate your support.
Thank you, Jill.
Item 11E was considered by the finance committee, and assuming it was forwarded with recommendation for approval, it has to do with purchase of property. And the title to that resolution is "A Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of Property Located at 1403 South Powell Street, Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas."
Let me say a couple of things on this, Jeff and council. We started considering this a year ago, the purchase of this property, the Atco Rubber Building. And I have learned over the years that when I come with such a request, the first question I get from the council was, well, what are we going to do with it? And we don't always have an answer for that. Sometimes it's just something we ought to get because of where it's located. But as I brought it back the second time, two weeks, or a little over a week ago, I had considered, well, if nothing else better comes along, we can certainly use it for warehouse space, because to build a warehouse is about three times, well, over two times the cost of what we would be paying per square foot for this building. But for me, that's a last resort. We wouldn't be buying it for that, but we would know, we would know we could have a use for it, or we could lease it, we could continue to lease it out to another tenant when this, when this company moves on. I think the airport commission made it clear last week that they would love to see hangers out of it. If the other thing doesn't come through, that, that we're really encouraged about, which would be the, the, is it the Army National Guard? Obviously, that would be our first choice, if that, if that works out, but we just don't know that yet. But we, this building's going on the market if we don't buy it, and it's going to go on for more than this. Is that fair to say, Greg? And so I don't see how in the world we could get hurt on this. And, and it just looks like something we should do to, especially with all the work we've got going on at the, in, at the future intersection of Powell and, and the extended sunset, and a new school being built nearby. I just think it's a, I just think it's a smart thing for us to do. So that's, that's why I brought it forward this time. And Koby, do you have anything you want to add?
Move a resolution to be adopted. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions if I could. Can we talk a little bit about the extension of Sunset again, and how this would affect that extension one way or the other? Let's say this did not get voted for tonight, or, or if it does get voted for, how's that going to affect that extension?
It won't keep, it won't keep the extension from being built if we don't buy it. It will, will be required to buy some right of way from whoever owns it.
From this property?
From this property, yes.
Because we're going to put a. We're going to put a roundabout there.
Yeah, and those pictures are in there, aren't they? Aren't they, did y'all see the pictures? Okay.
So there would be a roundabout either way?
Either way. We've envisioned wanting to put a new entrance, a main entrance into the airport back from really where the other one used to be. We moved it because of school traffic, but now we're confident the school can, if they're building a new elementary school, that, that, that won't be a problem to have the driveway there for the, for the airport. And it would come out just to the north of the roundabout, onto Powell.
Would that affect this building if, if we put that entrance in there?
No. No. It might need a little right of way from that property, being, I'm not sure, I didn't look at the, where the driveway is, the existing driveway is, and how that would need to.
I haven't looked at it in great detail, but I think it might affect the parking lot that's on the north side of the building slightly. I think that got repurposed as parking lot, and it used to be driveway to the.
We would likely, besides the roundabout and the improvements on Powell, we'd probably have to get some right of way from whoever owns that building.
Yeah, if we were doing a new entrance to the airport, yes.
The, what I was going to go with, go to, Jeff, was if, if the. The, what I was gonna go with, go to Jeff was if, if the, if this deal, if we don't use that building as a hanger, or if, whether with the guard or if the airport, if we don't use it for the hanger, it would not be, it wouldn't be essential that we move the entrance to the airport from where it is now. But if we're going to use that as a hanger, then that existing drive that we use now is going to, parts of it, it's gonna have to be shut off and converted, part of it, and, and taxi, taxiway build, or, or access for the planes or helicopters, if it's the guard, uh, to get out to the, uh, to get out to the runway. So, um, so it's not, it's not critical that we, depending on the use of the building, we may or may not have to relocate the entrance to the airport. I would prefer we do anyway because I think it's, it's gonna work better and it gives it a better presence on, on Powell. But, uh, but anyway, those are all sort of separate issues from, from the building, except for whatever right of way we would have to get, whatever property we'd have to acquire from whoever owned the building. Of course, obviously, if we own it, we don't have to worry about that.
Mayor, how much have we allocated for this, uh, extension in our bond program?
You got that, Ben?
We, we don't quite have a thirty percent estimate yet, and I am sorry, I don't remember the amount we thought it would be. I don't have that estimate.
So we don't have any numbers on what, what we're projecting the extension's gonna cost?
Well, we do from last August. I just don't remember what that is.
That was all, that was all presented when, when y'all voted to go ahead with those projects.
How much, how much of that have we allocated for land acquisition? Or for these properties we're gonna have to take, uh, take to, uh, have roundabouts in the extension?
The estimate's not broken down that well. It's, it's just a very rough estimate based on a per mile cost. It's not broken down per land or anything else.
So it's, it's a lump sum, uh, number we're looking at inclusive of whatever it costs for land acquisition?
Correct.
Which is the way we do most of our.
That's where you have to start. And then probably in about three to four months, we'll have a much better idea of what the cost will be.
I understand. Mayor, well, the problem I have, and I, I expressed it before, is in our, in this contract is leasing it back for three dollars a foot. And I've spent the last week talking to other realtors, property managers, and owners, and there's no place in Springdale found that you can find a warehouse for three dollars a foot. It's the common, it's the, uh, the consensus of, of the, uh, property managers and owners that the minimum cost is five to five fifty a foot. And a, a good recent example is there's a eighty thousand square foot facility that has just been, uh, leased for four dollars a foot. But the reason why it went to four dollars instead of five fifty is because the tenant built a bunch of offices in that, uh, facility. So I, I do have a problem with us, if, if we go ahead and buy it, I, I don't understand why we at least don't get market value for our rental. And also, how much, how much will it cost the, uh, city for, uh, insurance on this building?
Greg, on the, on the building, they're gonna continue to insure it as long as they're in it, right? And they're gonna continue any other, I mean, any maintenance costs are on them. So while they're, that's probably why we were able to, to, uh, to accept a less, a lesser, uh, lease cost per foot because we were, they were take, they were going to continue to ta, as long as they're in it, they're gonna continue to take care of things that would normally be on the landlord. Also, I, I believe we're getting this at a discounted purchase price and, and, uh, and if, if, if we ask them for more lease payment, they're probably gonna want more of a purchase price. So that just makes sense. They've got a bottom line that they've gotta come to as well. And, uh, just, it makes sense to me that this is a, this is a good deal for us. It's a way to get a property that we, we saw it first, but now they have decided they're gonna put it on the market and, uh, and they'll put it on for more than what, what they've agreed to sell it to us for. That's why I, and, and with them taking care of the other things that are normally on a landlord, I felt like a discounted, uh, lease price, lease per foot, uh, back, lease back was appropriate.
The insurance folks that I've talked to said that, uh, a tenant cannot, uh, uh, provide insurance on a property because after they sell it, they don't have a, an interest in it. They don't have an insurable interest.
We would have to insure the structure, but everything.
That's right. That's what I mean. So I'm, I'm curious what it would cost us for insurance.
Greg, did we, did we address that? Or do we need to? Do we need to adjust for that?
Greg Taylor, two nine nine one Willow Ben Circle here in Springdale. Uh, we would be reimbursed from the landlord on the insurance, so it, it is factored into. You would be the landlord, they would be the tenant, uh, during that period of time that they lease it back.
So on top of the three dollars per foot rent, they would also reimburse us for the, for our cost on our.
For any expenses that were incurred by the landlord.
We need to reflect that in our lease then, in writing.
Correct. We, we haven't drafted the lease yet, Mike. We just have a letter of intent to purchase with the agreement that we would enter into a lease once it's purchased.
The lease would, the lease would still come back to the council, Ben?
Correct.
Yeah, that, that was my biggest, biggest concern, number one, about being on the market. And then number two, about, uh, the, the fact that the owner has an insurable interest and the tenant does not. So we'd be responsible for insuring the property.
And then we, um, we have a purchase date of later in the year, so the purchase doesn't actually take place until October.
If we approve this tonight, the purchase would not take place till October. Is that what you just said?
Correct. We've got an agreed upon price and it will not, it will not change, but it will not have to be purchased until October.
Just basically wraps it up for us.
Okay. Um, are you done, Mike, or? So, um, if, um, well, first, Mayor, tell me why you believe this is discounted price on the purchase price? It's, it's based on an earlier appraisal?
It's, it's an older appraisal now.
And that appraisal was when?
In the, uh.
That appraisal was when? Do you remember?
Do you remember when? It, it was an updated, it was an updating of the old appraisal.
Last one was done in twenty twenty-three.
It's updated in twenty twenty-three?
The first one was done in twenty twenty-one.
And, and so the up, the number we're using tonight is the updated number? Of February of twenty-three? Okay.
And in the year, in that year, between the first appraisal and the second one?
It went up three hundred thousand.
Yeah, I thought it was more than that. Okay.
Just on, yeah, the appraisal was.
Point nine to three point two?
It was two points, two million four seven five to two million seven seven five.
Oh, I got you.
And then I had a question about the non-binding agreement and the lease that Mike was talking about. If, if we approve this tonight, are we locked into the two-year, uh, the two one year lease extensions?
It, the, the way the.
And why would we wanna do that?
The way the LOI reads, it just says that the terms will not be materially altered, but we still have certain things to negotiate. And there's a due diligence period as well.
That's true.
They, they think they need, they think they'll need more than a year, but possibly, ho, hopefully less than two. Is that right? Can we say that?
They, they were looking at eighteen months, yeah.
We're not gonna do it till October, so that's.
That's part of their eight, that's really part of their eighteen months is, they're that from now till then. And then they need about a year, a year. They feel like to leave, but they wanted, in case they didn't be completely out by a year, they wanted at least one.
I think they were just wanting some.
They just wanted a cushion there.
Some cushion, which is understandable in a business.
They had a lot of logistics to work out because.
Where's that language, uh, earnest about there wouldn't be any material changes to the, where, where is that?
It's on red page eighty-seven. The last sentence of the, before Mr. Taylor's signature.
Greg, clarify for me. I didn't follow you a while ago when you said two point four, and then it updated to two point seven. And how'd we get to three point two?
That's correct. And, um, but one of the, the, on the first two offers that were made, the city was involved in paying the real estate commission. We shifted that over to the seller with the new agreed upon purchase price. So the actual difference is about a hundred and sixty thousand.
I think Mike, I think Mike's asking the difference between the appraisal at two point seven and the su, purchase price at three point two.
Yeah, I understood it. It was two point four or something originally, and then you had a three hundred thousand increase, went two point seven, and how we got to three point two.
Right. The, the seller has never agreed to the appraisal amount that we presented. They've always felt like the building was, had more value. They thought the appraisal was low. So they did their own research. They did their own investigating on properties, and they were at a much higher rate. Like, they wanted to put the property at like three point nine million. So.
They do, and have they done an appraisal, or is that just their analysis?
I don't know that they had a full-blown appraisal done. Uh, they just looked at properties that were sold on Coldstar or LoopNet or the Multi List and, and I pulled the same comps, you know? And, and look, you've got buildings that sold for forty dollars a foot five years ago. Some of, if you look at the comps that are even in the appraisal that we have, some of those sales took place between three and five years ago. Um, and then I can find buildings that sold for two hundred dollars a foot. So, you know, it's just a value of what they think the building's worth and a value of what we think it's worth. And so between the two, uh, they're giving the city of Springdale, uh, the option to purchase the building. And if, if we choose not to, they're going to go ahead, they have made the decision to go ahead and relocate that plant, so they are going to sell that building. Um, and so the negotiation between the lease rate and the purchase price, that's just where we landed and what they would agree to. So, that's, that's how we got three point two million. I can tell you, if I went out there and I had a contract and I handed the contract to an appraiser, I can just about tell you what the appraisal value would be. But when you don't have a contract and they just go out on their own and they appraise it and they use comps that are three and four years old, things change drastically over a year on what something is valued at. So, you know, they asked me if I would list the property for them if they decided to sell it. I told them that I'd be interested and visited with them about it, but, but that's their value. That's what they think is worth, three point nine million dollars. So, that's about sixty-five dollars a square foot. Uh, and they think that's a reasonable price to ask for it.
How old was the building?
Uh, I think it was built in the seventies. Uh, much of it still looks like it was built in the seventies.
Sixties, yeah.
Um, so it's, it's not had, you know, a lot of updating done to it, but it's still a sixty thousand square foot building and, and, um, there's not very many of them that have sold in the last, you know, two years. And it has five acres of land.
And what, the whole thing that made us interested in the first place was the location and the very many ways that we could benefit from that. This, our airport is something we're very proud of and it is a city asset. And whether this ends up in the airport commission's under their control or under the city's control, I think it's a strategic piece of property that we need to get. And as I said a year ago, we will regret if we do not get it. There will come a day that something will happen there and we'll wish we had had it.
Well, I think the, uh, like I've said before, the circumstances between when it was first brought up and now are different. And, uh, we have this, uh, we didn't have this extension at that time. And, uh, we didn't have a new elementary school at that time. We didn't have the interest that we have in this area at that time, but we do now. And, uh, I think it's advantageous that we make a move now, uh, on this and, uh, get this, uh, piece of property.
So, in the letter of, um, I guess it's, it says non-binding agreement. Is that the same thing as letter of intent? Those two things are the same thing. So in this letter of intent, the first paragraph, it talks about purchase and sell agreement, and it refers to it as a PSA. Is that the same thing as what we used to call offer and acceptance?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, then I go over to the portion of the letter of intent that refers to the lease back. And I'm gonna ask a question about the insurance again and how that's all worked out. Cause insurance is not really mentioned here. The only thing that's mentioned here is it says lease terms to be provided and agreed upon simultaneous with the PSA, being an offer and acceptance, effective date. So, how does that, how does that gonna work, Greg? Where, um, we'll have a PSA or an offer and acceptance that basically we're author, authorizing the mayor to sign tonight, kind of, I guess we are. I mean, if we get, if this passes, how do we, how are we gonna have those lease terms and how are we gonna have the opportunity to look at those lease terms before, uh, the mayor would sign the, uh, P, PSA?
If I sign anything, it's just like, it's contingent on council approval. So you're gonna approve the lease terms and you're gonna approve the, you're gonna approve the contract for this, purchase of the property.
So the contract really won't be, uh, approved until all, all fa, factors are included, which is, which is the lease. So if the, if the terms of the lease are not approved, then the contract is not, is not.
So that's where we could deal with that insurance question?
That's correct.
Yeah, we, we'll do with it the way we typically do a commercial lease, which will have a base rent, which is what we've agreed on, on the three dollars. And then we'll have additional rent. We'll have to, we'll have to determine what that amount is. So we'll have to know what our insurance cost is gonna be, um.
Well, we get that from the municipal league, Cody? Cody?
Is that the quote for the insurance? Yes.
So we'll total all those expenses up and that'll come to a, a annual cost that'll be factored in per square foot. So it'll be three dollars plus additional rent. So when you get that monthly check, you'll get three dollars plus the additional rent that'll cover those expenses.
And, um, if they, uh, want it out in eighteen months, will there be a way for them to, to leave early?
Yes.
Cause this is a two-year extension, two one-year extensions, but you're saying they might not need it a full two years?
That's correct. And we'll have to have some language in there about an early exit if they choose to do that.
Colby, just because it is such, we really believe it's a viable project. We, we can't, we can't buy this based on it, but tell us the latest on the guard and their timing as well. Cause that, that kind of figures into Jeff's question of length of time.
As the mayor said, that, you know, originally, the worst-case scenario is storage. Uh, we know that for eighteen months, we'll get a lease out of this. We're looking beyond that, and I've been trying to secure funding for this. We're not gonna have it ready, um, right now for tonight's vote, but there's a chance that we will have some funding come available, before the closing. Um, it could come from the state. And we, we don't have a firm commitment yet on it, but high probability is what we've been told. Uh, the, the National Guard is looking at this location. They've, they've interviewed with several airports around here. We have a second meeting. We feel, we feel pretty confident that they're very interested in leasing this space from us. They're not gonna be ready to move into the building. Two thousand twenty-seven is best-case scenario, probably the beginning of two thousand twenty-eight, which we'd be able to negotiate terms with them for that lease. Um, but we are looking at high probability of getting funding for this purchase, just not at this moment, uh, but possibly before closing. Uh, they, they're saying that if, if we are selected as a site, let me back up. The reason this is even a discussion is the tornadoes that went through Little Rock, um, came very close to taking out their fleet, uh, there. And so they're wanting to disperse it around the state in different locations. And we have a long enough runway. They want a presence in northwest Arkansas. Um, the, the fuel contract was lost. Um, the, the fuel contract was lost with XNA, and so there's a potential that if we get this lease with the National Guard, which would have four Black Hawk helicopters and then four medical helicopters and possibly a fighter jet, um, that if, if we can get those and have them sign an agreement saying they'll buy at least $50,000, uh, dollars a month in fuel, uh, then they would, this would be a regional, uh, filling station for, uh, military aircraft. So this would also increase the amount of FAA dollars that we're allowed to get through the state and the federal government as well. So, um, the, the lease terms that we're discussing, you know, there will be the insurance discussion. The $3 a square foot is probably the worst-case scenario. Once they move out, we'll be able to negotiate a new lease with another tenant or with the, with the National Guard. So, uh, but it'll be a few years before they're allowed to come in here.
Kobe, if, if we in fact do lease it to the government, will we have to provide insurance or will the federal government?
I think it's a si, a si, a similar scenario. We've done this with other places that we leased. Uh, we factor in the insurance into our lease. We factor in tenant improvements into the lease. But there will have to be insurance on the building. It's just we will have to factor it into our lease.
Of, of our leases we've got at the airport now, what's our, uh, what's our average insurance cost for a lease?
I'm gonna defer to James on that one.
Well, because right now we get, uh, I think our latest, uh, hanger that we, uh, built, the total cost to the taxpayers was $400,000, and I believe we lease it for like, uh, $2,000 a month. So that's like a 38-year payback, and if we have to pay insurance out of that, it's even longer, isn't it?
I think they recently just increased the rent and they're, I, I believe, I've heard that the airport commission is gonna be raising it again next year. So, um, I mean, there will be incremental increases in the rent.
Really, any, any cost that we incur needs to go back to whoever's leasing it. So I don't, I don't.
Right now, we're leasing it in a flat fee.
Well, it needs to be built into that cost.
I agree, but I don't know if it is now or not.
Well, 38-year payback's not a, I mean, these aren't, the, I mean, I, I made the same comment when we were approving the funds, that it was right under a 40-year.
You're talking about an existing hanger.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, uh, I think we did get some federal money involved in that too, if, if.
But it's all still tax, we got federal grants and state grants, but still taxpayer dollars. Total cost was like 400 grand, a little over.
Anytime we can get any of that back at, back in Springdale, that's a good thing, rather than going somewhere else.
I think that any opportunity we have at buying land around the airport is probably something good to look at because they're not making any more of that and it's landlocked. So, you know, any, any future builds that we need to do, we need to make sure that we're looking at any opportunity we have for it, so.
We have a motion to second. Any further questions? Understanding that a contract and a lease would come back to this council. This is, this lets, this frees us up to start negotiating those, those, uh, terms.
I do have the, uh, answer to Mr. Overton's question. It was 11 and a half million was the estimate for the bond program for the Sunset Avenue extension.
And that, that's a total, that, that in, so that includes land acquisition?
Yes.
Anyone in the audience need to speak to this? All right. No more questions? Uh, guys, we're ready to put that up so the council can vote. Um, Mark, how do you vote? Thank you.
Carries 5-2.
All right. See, Jeff, that was it, wasn't it?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you. Item 12 is, I'll turn it over to Chairman of the, of the Ordinance Committee, Mike Overton.
We had one, one ordinance that come before the, uh, before the committee, and it was, uh, forwarded for recommendation for approval. And it's, uh, amending section 46-27 of the Code of Ordnance of City of Springdale. And primarily, it's a, a cleanup, uh, move to clarify some, uh, verbiage for our fire department. And, uh, Steve Lewis will explain it to us.
Thank you, Mr. Overton. It's, uh, the ordinance was adopted or created years ago when the department only had three or four stations. The intent of it was to keep a number of units, um, available to provide services to the city. We've outgrown this. We have mutual aid agreements. We have other policies and procedures in place to maintain adequate coverage for the citizens of Springdale. This is no longer needed.
Do the ordinance pass?
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? No? Anybody in the audience? Okay, guys, we're ready to vote. Mark, how do you vote on this? Thank you.
Carries 7-0. Does have an emergency clause.
Emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we're ready for emergency clause?
So is there really an emergency?
I think, I think the idea was, once it was identified that it was beneficial, get it on the books as quickly as we could. Just wiping out all the, all the verbiage that is needed in the, as far as the fires, uh, fire department's concerned.
Carries 7-0.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mike. Item 13. Turn it over to our city attorney, Ernest.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance accepting for annexation certain property into the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas, pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated 14-40-609. And on page 94 and 95, you will see the parcel, uh, that is coming from the county into the city. They've met the requirements to, to be annexed. They actually own one parcel that's in the city and another parcel adjacent to it that's in the county. This would bring it all into the city. And the property owner and their attorney is here if you have any questions.
Do the ordinance be adopted?
Second.
Okay, thank you. We've got a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Or anyone in the audience? Okay, we're ready to vote. Mark, how do you vote? Okay, thank you.
Carries 7-0.
Okay, Ernest, you can take item 14 also.
Thank you. This is, uh, item 14 is a resolution setting a hearing date on a petition to abandon a portion of utility under an achievement, handed or an achievement in the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas. As required by statute, that would set the public hearing for June 11th.
Do the last resolution be adopted?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions? Anyone? Okay, we're ready. Mark, how do you vote on this? All right.
Carries 7-0.
All right. Thank you for calling in, Mark. Thank you, council, for being here. Before I turn everybody loose, do we have any comments from department heads? How about counsel? City attorney?
No, sir.
Nothing from me. So we're adjourned. Thank you all very much.